We should be.
The microphones on the dais are wired in. I know that's not preferable, but you would have an adequate record if you chose to move. And I say that knowing the lawyers are the only ones who love a complete record.
Well, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Lakewood City Council Study Session for this Monday, August 22nd, 2022. I call the meeting to order, and we have three items for discussion tonight. The first is the Community and Economic Development Report, for which we will call on our Assistant City Manager, David Buwer, for this. Thank you for your patience. As we get assembled, we want to make sure that everyone can hear us, because otherwise it becomes painful not to be able to hear either physically in the audience or certainly on Zoom. So thanks for the shuffling of chairs opportunity here. Mr. Buwer.
Well, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. You have before you our annual Community Economic Development Report. I know you have three other items on your council agenda this evening. There's lots of information in this document. I don't want to go and spend too much time on it, so I'm attempting to keep staff comments short. I will start out with some introductory remarks. Becky is going to get into a little bit more detail on economic development. We do also have on hand either in-person or remote senior community development leadership. That includes Becky Newton, Tiffany Spear, Courtney Brunel, Jeff Gumm, and Bill Adamson, who represents South Sound Military Communities Partnership. And the document itself goes into quite a lengthy discussion on each one of these topics. Why are we here? Because the department, or excuse me, the city manager said he wanted to provide the council with an Economic Development Report. He didn't provide a whole lot of information of what was to be in the report. I left it to my discretion, and so I worked with the group to come up with the report that's before you this evening. I do want to talk about what community economic development is. Many people think it's one topic, but actually it's two. And while they are integral, they are separate. Community development is a process of making a community a better place to live and work, and economic development in its simplest forms is the creation of wealth in which the community benefits are created. I'd like to review the table of contents real fast, which is what you see on the screen this evening. There's a forward, a profile, a department overview, our level of community engagement and partnership, and then it gets into all the various descriptions of development services, economic development, and so forth. I will comment that we basically are tasked with six things within the department. One is to, of course, implement the city's council's goals and objectives, which we spend quite a bit of time in the report talking about. Enhancing the city as a safe, sustainable, and highly desirable place to live, work, learn, recreate, visit, and more. Report on achievements and performance. Manage our assets. Fulfill the department's regulatory compliance requirements and address changes in state law. And very briefly on the last one, changes in state laws, sometimes what the state wants or desires for the city of Lakewood is not necessarily what the city council desires. So there's always a bit of a tension between the two, trying to make both work. I would like to talk about the organizational structure real fast. And there is this chart, and that in its simplest terms breaks out the economic development, Community Economic Development Department into five functions. On the far left is Economic Development Services, Housing Programs, Long Range Planning, and SSMCP. Now, this isn't showing people or organizational structure, but it's talking about the function, and you begin to see who does what and what exactly do they do. Under Development Services, I've gone ahead and added or combined both planning and building as permitting. Some council members may not be aware of this, but we also do business licensing in the city of Lakewood. The very bottom, there's a significant amount of enforcement activities through the CSRT. That's a combination of the police department and other agencies. So lots of little things going on in each one of those areas. There's roughly about 20, 20 and a half people performing these functions. As far as big picture items, in my opinion, there are 10 for the upcoming year. One is, the most important, is developing and implementing strategies to retain and recruit staff. You may see as many as five departures in the next 12 months. That's 25% of the department. Not significant, because it could very well impact your ability to move projects forward, because you're spending a lot of time trying to fill positions, and a lot of knowledge goes away when some people leave. Number two is improving the post-pandemic public hearing engagement strategies. Some of this came out of the climate change perception study, but some of this is also based upon comments that we hear from people who access the planning department or the permit counter. I think there are some things that we can do to improve. As the council is aware, there is a city hall redesign that's underway, and there is also a department reorganization happening. We're combining certain departments or divisions together. The biggest change is going to be Development Services. Right now, Development Review Engineering, as in Public Works and Engineering, that's moving over to Development Review. And Courtney Brunel will lead that section within the department, so she will have responsibility over current planning, building, and engineering, and then the enforcement that's related to those items. That's a significant change. The desire is to see if we can't move permits through the system faster, and so that's one of our key initiatives right now. Next piece is just the ongoing coordination with Tacoma, or yeah, Tacoma with the CDBG and Home Program. We're behind on some of the programs that we'd like to implement, namely because of some of the other projects that Mr. Gumm is working on. You're going to see some things moving forward with the Home ARP program, and your council has given some opportunities to talk about how to use some additional funds. Mr. Gumm is more familiar with that program than I am, but that's something that you may very well see this fall. I want to keep you aware of that. Item six is implementing the new laws of the 2022 Legislative Session. There are some things we're a little bit behind on, such as middle missing housing, so we're going to bring that forward as a part of the periodic update, which leads into the next piece, which is maintaining the work schedule for the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. That work actually begins September 21st with the Planning Commission. That's where we're going to start talking about preliminary schedules and how the assignments are moving forward. We're also currently working on coordination with other departments, particularly Public Works, Parks and Recreation, to make sure that everything is moving together functionally the way it should. I would also tell you that we're supposed to have it done by June 30th, 2024, and then we're supposed to move it forward to the Puget Sound Regional Council, and they have six months to review and then certify. What's happened in the past is PSRC can't keep up with all the periodic reviews that they're supposed to review, and so what typically happens is our extensions. Now, as we get into this, you're also going to see a whole series of contracts coming forward on work for the update. That is also kind of scheduled for the fall and winter of 2024. There are some new requirements dealing with equity that are different than what we've seen in the past with comprehensive plan updates. That's going to be included in that process. And as we move forward, it gets really active becoming in January. So our intent is to give the city council 60-day updates on everything the planning commission is working on, so that the council is kept continuously apprised of what the commission is working on and what public comments have been. And if there's a process or an issue that comes forward that piques the council's attention, I'm sure you'll bring it to the city manager's attention. We will be initiating a climate change work plan, with that an annual report. We've actually been using some materials that gives us an historic picture of Lakewood's greenhouse gases since 2018, and we continue to use Google's system to help us with that. We also have a $50,000 grant from Department of Commerce we hope to use. Number nine, we always seem to have difficult or controversial development projects we're working on. We've just wrapped up Western State Hospital. The decision by the Hearing Examiner was made today, and then we begin, the appeal process is open. And lastly, is addressing affordable housing through collaboration with multiple partners. You've heard some of the things that Tiffany's been working on, but also this housing issue is keen to JBLM, and Bill Adamson is also working on that. He has an approximate $500,000, $550,000 grant, where he is working on both that and a resiliency climate change program for JBLM, all which are due by the end of December of next year. So those are kind of the high-level things that I'm sort of looking at as far as we move forward into the next year. I'm going to cut my comments short, and I'm going to turn it over to Becky to talk a little bit more specifically about economic development. And then after that, then the council certainly has the opportunity to ask us questions. So Becky, I give it to you.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Buwer. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. I'm just going to do a quick overview on economic development here for the city of Lakewood. Of course, our main areas of concentration for economic development is on communications and attraction, as well as business retention, expansion, and recruitment. Housing has become a larger component of our work here, as we all know that there's a need for more housing across the spectrum of from affordable to higher-end, and especially the missing middle, and particularly as we densify Lakewood and particularly in the downtown area. Key achievements as it relates to city council goals, specifically on economic development. Some of the things we really focus on are attraction of higher-wage jobs and companies to Lakewood. Average yearly employment growth has outpaced the county, and we are a net importer of jobs. Partnerships and collaborations with the regional ecosystem from Seattle to Thurston County and across the state is critical for us moving forward. Participation in planning and policy document updates to support positive business growth. Facilitation of development and providing assistance to businesses from startup to second stage and beyond, including connections to workforce training, as well as government contracting and other income streams. So, as Dave mentioned, trying to develop more wealth for not only our businesses that operate here, but our residents. Analysis of contaminated sites and pushing property owners to clean up those sites, such as the Chevron Swan Property Town Center, which is under in process, Ken's Tire, and areas along Pacific Highway. Serving on several boards and commissions, not just myself, but all of our members of leadership do contribute to regional and state programs, serving on commissions and various organizations. Connection to workforce education and technical assistance, as well as matching property owners and tenants. Brand awareness and promotion of Lakewood as the best place to do business, as well as a great place to live. So just kind of a few comments with regard to communications and attraction. The Build Your Better Here website and program is an awareness campaign designed to change the perception of Lakewood. So we do have strong evidence that this awareness campaign has generated and affected Lakewood positively. The audience for the campaign are builders, young families, warriors, military families, and their members and their families, as well as long-termers, those folks that have been here for a long time and have a lot of history and are vested interest in Lakewood. In 2022, we focused on content and social media influencers for housing as a great place to live, as well as incentives. Lakewood is a great place to work and develop a project, and we primarily utilize video, as well as radio and social media. Nircation is a lodging tax-funded website encouraging people to recreate here. It focused on golf, history, fun activities, and a wide variety of restaurants and worldwide flavors. And downtown focusing on cleaning up sites, mixed-use development, as well as a downtown park within that regional center. That's okay. I can talk to the pages. So I'll just go through briefly on recruitment. Over 1,400 businesses started or relocated in Lakewood in 2020 and 2021. We don't have great numbers from the state during those years, because there was a lapse in closing some of the business licenses due to the pandemic. However, the trend is in the direction of more businesses, as well as an uptick in home-based businesses. As of April 2022, the chart within the recruitment page shows an overall annual growth of 1.6% in companies. High growth, job growth, has been in construction, warehousing, and transportation, manufacturing, as well as government. And there has been some retraction in healthcare, which we're seeing come back. Hoteliers, of course, were hit one of the hardest during the pandemic, but recovering quite well. Council programs and policies have been very helpful, and key incentives such as no local BNO tax are favorable to increase business activity, especially some of those manufacturing and high-wage companies that we're trying to attract to Lakewood. Sales taxes continued on an upward trend, while 2020 was essentially flat. There was a 20% increase in retail sales in 2021 as compared to 2020, and the retail pull factor suggests that Lakewood is becoming more of a retail center, both for retail businesses and restaurants. Okay. And so business retention and expansion is a key component of economic development. We visited 229 businesses in 2020 and 2021 and worked with a number of businesses on retention. Many of them, the retention cases were due to increases in commercial tenant rents and other building-related issues. Here, we also utilize partnerships and our ecosystem to assist businesses and workforce and other issues. The chart you see there, for your assistance, shows in 2021 our outreach by industry and jobs represented. The city also allocated monies to, next page. We allocated $500,000 of ARPA funding to the Pierce County Business Accelerator Program. Our partnership with PC, we will provide a trade fair in October and a business showcase for the 200 graduates of that program. And on that page also, it just shows you the MFTE projects that have been approved over the years. And those are my brief comments for this evening. Thank you.
Well, great. Mr. Buwer, do you have some other follow-up, or?
That really concludes our remarks this evening. Really going to turn it back over to the city council.
Great.
One thing I will add, however, as SSMCP, if you take a look at the things that they're working on, are very, very substantial in nature and speaks well to the city of Lakewood and its partnership with JBLM. Those are multimillion-dollar projects, and they continue to move forward. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will end my comments.
I have a number of questions. Thank you both for the very detailed and fine report. I just have a couple of questions to start the conversation flowing. So, given the wealth of information and the very positive successes in a number of areas, given your history here, what would you say are your three wins for 2021, 2022, followed up by, what do you think are three of the biggest challenges to getting us closer to yes on some of council's goals with regard to development and the CBD? So, you know, it can be not necessarily big wins, but personal wins. What do you think you're most proud of that we've accomplished in the last year and a half, two years?
The two wins that come out and speak well are the implementation of SED+, the implementation of the permitting system.
Okay, like the PALS Lakewood version?
We get a lot of positive comments. We recently attended a meeting at Master Builders Association, and they congratulated Lakewood for moving forward with the system and using it in companion with the county. The other big one, my personal one, is the fact is that the department's changing, and I'm not going to be here forever.
Oh, that's a bad thing for us, but positive for you.
And so the effort has been made to transfer all my information and knowledge, so that when I do move on, there is a seamless transmission or whatever to other people. There's a lot of information I'm sharing. I'm also not working on major projects as much. The work is being given to other individuals to move forward with. I think that is a real significant issue for Lakewood that I'm concerned about in the future, because you do have a lot of people leaving. The other thing is, is I think that Lakewood's made some pretty strident steps on climate change. And we're being recognized for it, and so that's worth noting. And if you take a look at Pierce County and Pierce County cities, Lakewood is at the top of that list in trying to promote things that are reasonable tasks to move forward with a very difficult subject. So those are three things that off the top of my head come forward. On the challenges side, we still wrestle with Lakewood's image, although I think that's slowly changing. We still have ongoing land use issues that we've inherited from the county that are extremely difficult to solve, and they require a lot of work. Things, redevelopment of the PAC Highway Corridor, as well as South Tacoma Way, we struggle with, in part for different reasons. That's one thing that is a challenge. We've tried very hard in many occasions to work with the Korean-American We've tried very hard in many occasions to work with the Korean-American community, but we've not been as successful as I think the city would like to be. That's a very tough nut to crack. So that's one that's a challenge. How to deal with neighborhood groups or the general public? I don't think that neighborhood groups are going to come back, that you'll be looking at a different format that by which people are communicating with the council. And some of the literature suggests that people will use, will use social media to talk about a specific issue and then come to the council and say, we want you to solve this. And so you have all these little different pings. I think you're going to see more of that. And so how do we, how do we look at that into the future as far as trying to meet the needs of the community?
Even better, yeah.
Western State Hospital. It's, you know, it's a big monster out there, and I think we're trying to get some, some control of it through this master plan. They all, they have reporting requirements they've never had before to give to the city on an annual basis to talk about their operations. And then that gives the city the opportunity to go in and amend the master plan if things aren't working well. So, but that's a challenge. And I can't help but go back to the issue of just the primal nature by which Lakewood's developed. I mean, we're dealing with Boat Street right now, Habitat for Humanity. That may sound real small to you, but my gosh, the issues that surround that with all these little pieces and utilities that we don't own and trying to make it all work takes an extensive amount of staff time. So I think those are some of the things that kind of, you know, you're come to the surface, you're kind of taking me off guard a little bit.
That's all right. Follow up on, on housing. I'm looking at page thirty of our packet and I, to be honest, I was a bit surprised to see new housing construction from 2010 to 2022 with Lakewood as the largest, if not one of the largest cities on that list, with the lowest average per year in new housing construction. Why is that?
Well, there's a list of reasons in the report. I won't, I'll see if I can remember some of them. I will tell you that one is the underlying R1 and R2 zone. And we've had attempts to try to change that and it has met with considerable opposition. The list is found on page thirty-five or page thirty. There are nine items.
I see the ten, you know.
Yeah.
And I, I guess, this is my just personal challenge or frustration is we spend so much time and effort on the two sub area plans, and I see certainly movement in the Lakewood Station District Sub area plan to get into additional housing density. But for the life of me, I don't understand why we have yet to see a mixed use project proposed in the town center, in the central business district, something after four years of the survey plan. Not blaming anyone, I'm just pontificating, you know, what more we could do? What are the impediments to getting that kind of development that we want here? Is it economics? Is it availability of land? I think there's plenty of asphalt around. We've all seen it. There's swaths of it. You know, what are the impediments that we're hearing on the street to get a good first mixed use project in the town center?
Well, it, it didn't help the situation when there was a major change in ownership, when we went from RPAI, RPAI to Kite Realty. So that is one thing that kind of sticks out. The other thing is, is Kite Realty hasn't done mixed use projects before. And I know that Becky has been working with him and getting them in contact with residential housing providers so that we can see those kinds of projects. And Lakewood is pretty flexible on this. Mixed use can be one parcel with one building over here retail and another building over here being multifamily. So you, you can have some flexibility.
Right. And the CBD, as we all know, is more than just across the parking lot here. Kite owned property and includes as north as we can as a colonial center. Right?
I, I will tell you that, you know, getting rid of these old tire buildings is another issue and the amount of work that we've done on 9616 Gravel Lake Drive. And, and yet we've been stymied, not so much by the legal department, but by the Superior Court Judge who's given the individual more time than we think is necessary. But we are, as soon as the sixty days is gone, is moving forward. You're going to see a contract for demolition work, you know, and you're meeting on September 6th. So those things are moving forward. I, I think we're still laying the groundwork in some ways for the downtown plan. I think Becky has some additional information. Can you provide on that that I'm missing?
I would just add that a lot of the comments that we get from developers are that Lakewood is not quite there yet in terms of rents to support what they need to build the types of projects that we're looking for. So that's one of the comments that we've received. There are actually a number of mixed, I know we've been saying this for a while, that there are a number of mixed use projects and developers that are kind of in the pocket, if you will, that want to do mixed use projects along Gravel Lake Drive, as well as in Lakewood Town Center as well. And of course, we'd love to see a mixed use project at the QFC, former QFC, but we all know that there's still challenges with regard to that building. So I think is the rents. Right now, we're going through a process by which we're updating our rental market survey to show developers that we really are getting the rents that are needed to build those projects. Also predictive, there, you know, a number of factors, predictability on the multifamily tax exemption project. That is an incentive for developers, but it's not a given that they'll actually get that. So sometimes there is a delay with regard to that. But mostly what I hear is the rents not getting to the level they want to get to. And there's a limited amount of, or types of developers in the region that also do affordable housing. So in order to get a developer that can do affordable housing, which we also need, they, they have to be very specialized in that. And, and also, I just lost my train of thought. So the getting, we do have a developer right now that wants to do affordable and just trying to pick the right piece of land to do that development on. So we have Lakewood Station. There's, you know, potential for 600 units in that area, a mix of multifamily and town homes. We've got Lakewood Town Center, who's really actually very active right now, working with some of the local developers and regional developers that want to do those types of projects. But they just keep coming back to what are the rents? What can we get for the rents?
Let me throw this out, and I'm sorry if I'm monopolizing, but this is an issue for me. So the, the issue of rents, and I'm thinking back, you know, I got an econ degree, so I understand supply and demand a little. It seems to me rents are a function of demand, right? You know, the more restricted the supply, the higher the value or the cost in terms of rents. But there's also a function of the more desirable, the location, the more demand for whatever the supply is limited or otherwise. I look at Procter Station in North End Tacoma, I looked at six, the six half area, those kinds of areas. And to me, as a guy who travels a fair amount and looks at a lot of communities, because that's kind of my shtick. I love looking at how people put stuff together in their downtowns and how they've engendered the connectivity between populations, young and old, and what kind of amenities they have. My question is this, it's a chicken or the egg? So do activities, excuse me, amenities for development lead to greater demand and perhaps increased rents? Or is it, you got to have the development in order for there to be amenities? And the reason why I ask is we've been chatting forever about trying to get the town center kickstarted with an urban park, perhaps a library as a catalyst project, something to make Lakewood have more of a desire for young people like Mike, twenty-five-year-old who might want to live here, but would prefer to live downtown Tacoma or even Seattle. How do we get those young people excited about living here when there aren't the amenities that are as exciting as one might find elsewhere? And without the amenities, the developers are not going to come down because they can't command the rents. But if you get some, some buzz going on, you look at Ruston Way and Point Ruston and all those other areas, even University Place, there is something of buzz that's creating demand, which is increasing rents and creating the synergy for better development. We don't seem to have it. Why?
We don't have it yet, or to the degree that perhaps you would like to see.
Yeah, because I've got a limited tenure like you, Mr. Bu, sometime in my lifetime would be great.
I would, if you're asking me which is a chicken or the egg, I would say it's creating a strong sense of place. And we actually talk about that in the report. I'll just read to it. Strong sense of place correlates with the robust social ties that make a place is successful. People gravitate toward livable places and tend to stay.
Absolutely.
This gravity toward a place enhances economic sustainability. And then when we get into a discussion about the issue that you brought forward, why hasn't this happened in Lakewood? I attempted to try to explain that by saying this. For years, Lakewood's biggest problem is that growth has been in a disorderly manner. Significant improvements made recently in policy and infrastructure to change the course are promising. The work of elected officials' vision for Lakewood is beginning to bear fruit, but I don't think we're there yet.
Right.
You know, some good examples, look at the different types of uses you see along Silicon Boulevard from Lakewood Drive all the way down past Bridgeport Way. That whole area was general commercial by the county, by the county for many years. And then they changed it to MUD, which is no much different than general commercial. And so Lakewood was allowed to move forward with this little, you know, thing. I mean, look at some of the apartment complexes that were built in the early nineties. There were thousands of residential units built in the nineties and people were really upset. And, and they are actually built in the wrong locations. And so now the city of Lakewood is trying to address these kinds of issues after the fact. And, and this is difficult type of urban planning. So when you take a look at it from that perspective and just go down South Tacoma Way or PAC Highway, that's a whole nother different area of Lakewood. So we, we have all this stuff that we're trying to, to clean up in some form or fashion. So one, one effort towards this is, is, has been the downtown sub area plans. And the desire on the city council is to start putting in infrastructure to make this place more walkable and so forth. But at the same time, it's a city park. It's the farmer's market. It's the activities on Motor Avenue. All those things together help build that sense of place that brings forward the community that you, and everybody wants.
Right. But we're getting there.
We're getting there.
Yeah.
But we're not there yet. And I would also say this, you know, we're getting there because the council spends a lot of time on this topic, land use planning. How many times does community development come before the city council? I am tired of coming to community development meetings or council meetings every Monday night to talk about community development. But at the same time, it also shows a high degree of interest in wanting to make it work. And what you're working on today is not really going to bear fruit for 10 to 20 years down the pipe.
Right.
So it's a major policy push. Look at, for examples, of the industrial park in Woodborough. That was a 20-year project.
Right?
We've, we've all. I hope I'm not preaching.
Yeah, well, you're preaching to the choir. I'm raising the conversation because it's a good conversation to have and to remind ourselves and to say, yes, we've done some great things, but we know, we all collectively know there's work to be done. So I will shut up and turn the microphone over to others, but I've got some other questions here. Deputy Mayor Moss, and then to my right here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Don't go away. When we talk about affordable housing and the process of building more affordable housing, is it possible to put an amount of rent that the people pay? Because we talk about affordable housing, $900 doesn't do it. So any prices on those?
Well, you're going to see some of this coming forward through the periodic update where the state is basically saying that you have to provide a certain percentage of affordable housing. So you'll be given a certain number of units and a certain percentage will have to be affordable at different income levels. So how are we going to do that? Right? That's been, gets really close into mandatory, mandatory inclusionary housing. And so that has its own set of obstacles that will perhaps make it more difficult for people to put apartments or multifamily or townhomes or mixed use development. That's something that you're going to be hearing on a presentation that Tiffany will be making a couple of months from now on that subject. As far as controlling rents, there really isn't a method by which the city can establish an amount of money. There have been some cities, I think Tacoma, Olympia and Seattle, that have placed controls that have basically said that if you want to, if a person is having to move because of increase in rent, you give them more time to find somewhere to go. In Seattle, if there's a certain percentage of increase in rent, you have to pay for that person's relocation if they can find something. There's some other things that Olympia does. I believe that the city attorney has been asked to provide you some information on that. I believe she'll come back and get into more of the details. Those are some things that you could do to maybe help offset the issue. The other thing is, is a tenant-based rental assistance program where the city of Lakewood provides a portion, pays for a portion of the rent increase for persons who are finding themselves in the affordable category. Mr. Gavin and I have been talking about amending the 1406 program and bringing that back in for TBRA. I'm not sure we can use it for the Home Art Program, but that's something that we were talking about. But again, those are limited amount of funds. They are not going to help out hundreds of people. They're probably less than a hundred and it will be based upon who needs it the most. So there are some minor things that we can do, but it's, rents are always going to be a struggle in this market. I know Jeff is present. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Jeff? Okay.
Well, then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Anderson. Mr. Branson, it runs into Ms. Newton's comment that you don't see certain developments because the rents aren't there yet. And it's the push-pull between maintaining, quote, affordable rent and having rents of a sufficient, a sufficient market rate to attract development, create more units. So it's a conundrum. Mr. Anderson? Maybe.
Yeah. Thank you. Just a couple of comments and a question. With respect to some of the development here, when we look at the comparators that were selected, for example, Tacoma gives everybody that builds a condo an eight-year tax benefit.
Yeah.
So whether that's a good policy in the long run or not is another question. Both Tacoma and University Place have something we don't, which is they have view property left, all the good property in Lakewood's taken. Let's go up four or more stories in Town Center, you can see back to the mountain. Or we get some property from the Fort Silicon campus of Pierce College that has a view back the other way. So we don't have view properties, so. For Town Center development, several hundred units were built by Berg at the UP Town Center area. They gave away a parking garage that was paid for with transit money. Questionable legality, among other things. So there are some additional reasons, but I think one of the biggest ones is that good land was taken and it was taken for large lot, single-family residences. Going forward, I am concerned. The, there is a substantial plurality, if not majority of the legislative majority who wants in the next session or two to raise taxes when they don't need new money. And the reason for that is they want to redistribute the money from people who have money to people who don't. It's very simply put, it's a socialist view from Seattle. It's dangerous for housing because whether it's an backdoor attempt at rent control or inclusionary zoning, it raises the cost to the builder owner of the unit and they have to charge more collectively for rent. And it dissuades them from building housing. So it's going to exacerbate the prospect that for sacrificed on the art altar of political expediency. One thing we may be able to do to react to that, because I don't think we can change it in this election, is look at the dysfunctional nature of the Pierce County Housing Authority, perhaps even form our own to take advantage of federal. and perhaps even form our own to take advantage of federal programs that are available. And do this then maybe in conjunction with, we could merge with Tacoma Housing Authority, who's done an excellent job in bringing private money together with the low-income subsidies that are available from the feds to build affordable housing instead of going the inclusionary zoning route, which I think will just stalemate development of that nature. And so I think we should seriously look at that. As I think I've said before, prior to the change of administrations, I had a conversation, a couple of conversations with the then head of HUD for the region. He said it was ironic that his best housing authority and worst housing authority were next door to each other. Speaking of Tacoma and Pierce County Housing Authorities. And so we may not have some of the same political motives as Tacoma, but the housing authority there has done an excellent job at leveraging the programs that are available. I think we should look at that for the affordable nature and let the market take care of the prices of marketplace rent.
Thank you. Mr. Branson? I see Mr. Gumm here, so when ready.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bueller, Ms. Newton, I really appreciate the depth and breadth of the presentation that you gave to us. There were things to learn in that, that are there. And it was really clear that your department and the divisions within your department, you know, all doing important work that impacts the future, not just the present, but the future that goes on to do that. But there were, there are a couple of areas. And I guess I'll just comment a bit on the rents question so that I can get that behind me. But to what extent is the issue about inquiries about rents attributed to some of our own internal policies and land use policies that limit the number of units that can be built, such as height restrictions and things to that? And I mean, it would seem a development could move from not penciling out to penciling out if it could have two more floors of rentable units to be able to do that. Is that something that we hear or that we've looked at? You know, when we did the downtown area plan, we adopted a thing that said, if you're on the edge of the downtown, you can only build so high. And then as you get further into the downtown, you can build a little higher. Whereas that's not necessarily the model that you see in the Proctor neighborhood, for instance. Right next to single-family houses, they built six-story mixed-use buildings. And when it was about to happen, there was a lot of angst. And after it happened, everybody seems to be, seems to be good with it. I, so I guess the question is not the rent of a single unit, but the total rent that can be garnered from a project. And if there are ways we can help, because we've seen recently come before the council some developers that are looking to take advantage of density bonuses because it's, they're not because they thought that getting a density bonus would get them more rent per unit, but it would get them more rent because of more units. And it would be something to look at. I guess, Mr. Bueller, in your entire presentation, the thing that was greatest concern to me, that I wanted to see, had to do with your discussion about the department and succession planning and who's going on and some of the strategies that maybe need to take place. I and others, and as a consul, it seems like every budget cycle, when you come before us, we ask you, do you need more people? To do all the things that we know that you have. And your consistent answer has always been, I've got enough people, I've just got to, but I do have to prioritize things. Well, you know, this presentation doesn't sound like that, that answer. And I would tell you that within the next 60 days, we have more budget hearings and meetings to go over. And your presentation tonight begs that question to you again. So I am concerned that one of the solutions that you said that we'll be able to deal with this by cross-training. Okay, people, so that if we shrink profile, we'll still be able to do everything. And cross-training, to me, sounds like somebody is going to do two jobs for a while, and it never seems that that's going to be the right thing. So I would ask you to look at your own concerns and think about the, if you want to describe it as the post-Bueller Community and Economic Development Department, take a look at what are the folks, when the department is being led by some folks who aren't as experienced as you and some of your very senior folks that you indicate are close to moving on. How do we do that? Because I think the police chief gave us that same message, but we gave him retention tools and ability to over-hire and do some things. And we can go back and forth about the relative importance of public safety versus community and economic development, but they're on a pretty, pretty close to a level bar to where I see. The other thing that was in your report is a thing that says, C E D employees increasingly receive more than their fair share of verbal attacks and heavy criticism. And clients show little restraint and are regularly mean-spirited, politically charged, and derogatory. I admit that I've heard some anecdotal instances of that, but I haven't had it, heard it stated as the epidemic that that phrasing seems to imply. So I guess in going to the mayor's question about your challenges, okay, in terms of your successes, are you really going to be able to bring us a plan to address this challenge in the next biennium?
The short answer is yes, but we do need to improve the level of decorum when we are speaking with people. Let them know their boundaries. And I would say that some members of the public feel that there are no boundaries. They can say and do anything they want. You see this a little bit on social media quite regularly. But in preparing this report, this was a common comment that I received from multiple staff members about the behavior of the public. You know, it's, you don't, it would be nice if people were polite and nice, but people are frustrated. I think the pandemic has made things worse. They can't get the supplies they need to build their houses or their structures. You know, the cost of money is going up, and they see any delays that we make at the permit counter is affecting them. I think people are frustrated and haggard, and you see that come out in dealing with the public, and particularly at the permit counter. And you're trying to deal with a lot of people and a lot of different issues. It can be a little overwhelming. And I will tell you, I mean, a good example is the Dangerous Building Abatement Program. Every building has its own set of unique situations, and many of those situations all have human factors. And not one single one is the same. And, you know, there's a heavy burden upon Jeff Gumm and his group to make sure that people are relocated and that they're in a better position than they are, than they're currently in. It does take its toll, and that's just my own opinion. And I thought, since we're doing an annual report, it would be worthwhile to, you know, bring that point forward.
Well, you know, again, the city will do well if particularly the frontline people that work with our residents and do well, given the understanding that, you know, nobody comes to interact with the city staff for recreation. Okay, you know, they come, they come to deal with a problem, and professionally, you have to understand it. There are a lot of professions, not just people who work for cities, but others, that who routinely work with people who are stressed. Okay, that, so. But you need to not only invest in making sure that the workloads are manageable, but also that you, you, we talk an awful lot about behavioral and mental health needs out in the community. But if, you know, if there are some needs internally that we need to do so that we can keep doing well and stay on a trajectory that, while it may take a long time, will get us to where we hope to go. I think the council needs to be aware of the extent that that need is there and of options to meet it. To go on. Let me move on to one other item that was in your thing, and it had to do with, one of the reasons why housing didn't go on. And it had to do with, we as a council, we deal with the plan for 2044, and we deal with zoning, and we do all that, and we always talk about density. Okay, and being able to go and do that. And I have to say that I was not personally well-aware that when things were platted, whether they were platted 10 years ago or 60 years ago, that density rules are built into the plats and that we as a council can say whatever we want with zoning rules and things like that, but the plat will legally limit the density. And that has to do with some of the neighborhoods that we have where we have our one and our two zoning particularly and subdivisions that were created prior to incorporation. But I've never heard the limitations around that come up when we are talking to the Pierce County Regional Council or the Puget Sound Regional Council. And we say, well, our projected housing is this many units. We just always use, well, what does the zoning say that is possible? And I guess that I'd be concerned that we're not kidding ourselves if we really have those structural problems of where we can't actually build to the density just because we put it into the zoning rules. And I've also never heard us make that argument to the planning entities above us when they're trying to assign us numbers. They're all saying we can't do that. So that seems to be an area that at least we'd want to be more transparent in understanding so that we're projecting things going forward. With that being said, I do, you know, I do appreciate the quality of people, new people that you've brought on as they have been new people. I lament the quality of the people that run off to other cities because we don't have, to be able to go and do that. So I think that that reflects greatly on you and on the city manager in your role as mentors to people, to be able to go and do that. And, you know, it's you who's bringing these concerns to us. It's not city employees from all over coming and sending pings to council members about being unhappy. So, but I look forward to hearing how we can help you when we get around to talking about the next biennial budget. Mr. Mayor, that's all that I have.
Very good. So Mr. Bokey is next. After Mr. Gumm, did you want to weigh in on anything, or otherwise I'll turn over to Mr. Bokey? He says no. Mr. Bokey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to ask about, I guess this is for Ms. Newton. I mean, we see, everyone sees warehouses and what's going on. And then I look at your list on page 19, the different businesses that moved into the area. Not all of those are jobs within Lakewood, I think, in some cases. Some are within the warehousing, the Amazon services number. Where do you see the most interest in bringing businesses into Lakewood? Who are you, who are you talking to?
We're, in terms of types of businesses, a lot of the, because we have a relationship with J B L M and defense contractors. So some of that is relationships with businesses like Tactical Taylor, Aero Precision, who's moved to Lakewood. So some of those manufacturing jobs are some of those that we're trying to target, advanced manufacturing that brings those jobs, particularly since we have the support in our region with advanced manufacturing training facility at Clover Park Tech, things like that. So trying to attract more businesses that make things, if you will. So those, that is one focus that I think is important. But we're seeing more retailers. We're also seeing more restaurants coming into the area. As you've seen, kind of a shift to, in the retail market and industry, to more experiential types. And like the indoor catapult adventure park. And so as we work more with Kite to partner with residential developers, what are those commercial-type businesses that will come into the town center for folks to shop? Where we're going to see some more retailers come in, we're also probably going We're also probably going to see more in terms of healthcare and personal services coming in because that will support our, our demographic and our, the people who live here. And then, of course, the demand still is there for industrial in terms of transportation and warehousing.
And I don't know if you can state this publicly or not, but you mentioned Tactical Taylor. How is their relocation going?
Right now, we're just kind of waiting. They, some of the things that they're doing is they have a partnership and subcontract with Arrow Precision. So they've moved some of their machinists over to Arrow, which Arrow is actually expanding and out, outliving their, their facility that they have now. So they even need more space as it is. So right now, Tactical Taylor, we're, we're waiting to have a conversation to see what is the right size for them. It's a challenge because industrial space, as you know, the cost of industrial has gone from $6 a square foot, you know, five, eight years ago to 20, to even upwards of $30 a square foot. So that is one of the biggest challenges right now. And so we're, we're working with Tactical Taylor, but trying to figure out what that right size is for them, what they will be doing in-house versus what they'll be doing with a subcontractor.
What kind of interest do you see? I mean, we do, we do have, I guess, I won't use that terminology because it's, we do kind of have an open zone right in the air corridor where we discourage new housing. But we would, I guess, encourage certain types of businesses. How much besides EFN and there they want to expand their, build a warehouse? How much interest do you see in that area? How do you market that area? How do they assemble land?
Right, as you know, it's all, the underlying zoning is industrial for all of that, the air corridor area. And so residential is allowed to exist as a non-conforming use. We are starting to get more interest in it, me personally, on looking at different areas within the air corridor that could be purchased for an industrial use.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That area may very well go into some level of flex space. So that's an opportunity that is in our code that would work well in AC1, AC1 and 2 over time.
What does that mean?
A flex space, it's, you can have some level of industrial use, a series of suites, one building where you have four or five different users and you partition off the buildings. And there's ways of designing it that are, 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 work well for small businesses. Some flex space facilities would allow for housing on the upper level, but that's not going to work in AC1 and AC2 because of the restrictions on, on total number of residences. Something that you did talk about with industrial parks and warehousing, let me go back for a moment. I never thought I would see the Lakewood Industrial Park come in with a manufacturing use they would permit. And we've seen that now with Arrow Precision. That's a large scale manufacturing. I think we have some guitars and at one time we had some vehicle space. But I think there's going to be more added pressure on the Lakewood Industrial Park over time to see some increased level of manufacturing.
Okay, so I do want to talk about a couple of things on, on comments that were made by a couple of members. And one of them is the height restrictions, and I would agree with that. I think after coming back from the PCRC and basically every other city in, in Pierce County says, hey, we told you what you're taking, you're taking it. And our insistence that a large part of our community be zoned at a rural level, we have to make a decision about our multifamily. If, if we do, if we do, we're going to get what we're doing now, which is essentially the whole city, except for a few areas of, of the city, zoned very lightly, will be three story apartment buildings, small, that will be poorly managed someday and end up falling apart. And so if, I, I'm with Councilmember Brandstetter. If we're, we need to have a serious conversation. If we want something in the downtown core, we need to allow people to go higher. We need to, and then when we talk about taking on 83,000 people, which I think we're going to have to do in the next comp plan, we really need to talk about minimum heights and, and what we're trying to achieve. Because it's just, it's just not going to work. It's not going to be the city we want it to be. We won't have amenities. So then I'd talk about amenities. The biggest, best amenity point, Reston has a trail along water. We don't have that. Our lakes are, are essentially private bodies of water owned by the state, but they're basically locked up. So unless we commit millions towards increasing water access and trying to build around that and create more a community around access to water, it's just not going to happen. And I don't, I, I've never sensed that the city or, or the population in general wants to commit those kinds of resources. So I, I think that's tough. I'm with Councilmember Anderson on that, that I, I think amenities are, are tough. And if, and then it gets down to you create more and bigger parks. How do you do that? How do you create that? And then we need to talk about a parks impact fee and a steep one. Other cities do it. We've never done it. We've let millions of dollars probably get out of the way when we need to do parks impact fees. And, and so when the, you know, that, that, I don't know if it'll be in the town center, but if the, if the transit center gets going and they put up 600 and something units and we give them a tax break and we get nothing in the way of amenities, except maybe a little space that they have to do anyway, we've probably another missed opportunity. So I, I think we need to be, we need to be very, become very strategic about how we want to go forward on, on the, the housing piece. And because what I think we're doing now is status quo and it's not going to really work in my mind, especially when they're talking about pushing us to 83,000 people. And, and trust me, I mean, I, I think Councilmember Waylon was there that night. The smaller cities are not going, they, they are not buying into this whole growth management thing. They are going to make sure that the city of Tacoma and Lakewood and maybe University Place and maybe Puyallup take almost all that growth. And the days of pushing all the growth into the urban unincorporated areas is rapidly coming to a close too for a number of political reasons. So I, I think we, when, when it comes time to do the comp plan and whatnot, we, we need to have some very serious discussions about what we want to do. That's my take on the housing side, but beyond that. I'm pleased. I, I think, given the last two or three years, I'm, I'm pleased with the, the progress we're making on the job side and, and therefore the sales tax side also. I, I sense that there's, I think that this council isn't any different than every previous council, I believe, in the city of Lakewood since it started in that it, there's, there's strong support for it to become more of a commercial center. That's what I still feel that, I mean, we've got all this area along I-5 and whatnot. Warehouses are the order of the day. That's, you kind of take what the market will give you. And I don't know what the next iteration of that is or not. But I just, those are my two cents on that. I don't think I had any other, any other questions beyond that. I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, any questions, Ms. Bell?
Briefly, you mentioned more warehousing. Is that, was that, did I misunderstand that?
I'm not sure if I mentioned that, but there are more projects in the works, definitely.
Warehouse.
Yes.
Where are they going?
Well, there's a, I mean, you've probably seen the Woodbrook map. There is another, what they, so it would be north of the Panatoni project, which is geodes now, which was sold. And so it's about another 300 to 400,000 square feet of warehousing in that area.
Thank you.
And there's also, you know, proposed projects, of course, on the Pierce County gravel pit, which will probably end up being something other than what is in permitting right now. And also the, on, along, in Spring Brook, there's some additional warehousing being proposed out there. And as we were talking about earlier, we anticipate more in the air corridor. There is some vacant land up there by the Starlight Distribution Center that is under contract, so that will likely be warehousing as well, some of that.
Thank you.
I would also point out that we're behind the scenes working on how e-commerce works in our zoning code. So we're wanting to stay ahead of trends to see what, what that looks like for Lakewood. And there's more to follow on that several months ahead.
Anything else? Just a final question to both of you on Mr. Bokey's comment on building height. We can go up 90 feet in the central business district for height. And that gets you, what, six, six and a half, seven stories or whatever for mixed use project?
I believe it's 90 feet. And, and when you're getting close to single family existing residential neighborhoods, you have to step it down and then you go up. And that's to try to lessen the impact of large buildings upon smaller houses.
I would think that would be plenty high since we haven't seen a project yet. It's mixed use in the town center. We'll see what happens first. Mr. Anderson?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong. I think, isn't there a break at the type of construction that is required changes with the height of the building? And there's a break at three, three stories, six stories. But after you get above six stories, you're, you're stealing concrete for the whole thing, right?
There is a break, there's a couple of breaks. There's one at four, four and five. And as you go up higher, there's another one. I just don't know the details, Mr. Anderson.
So we might, we might have a, what looks like legitimate reasonable height restriction, but it isn't the sweet spot for a developer. Once they've broken to that 90-foot level, really where they're going to be able to pencil the project might be taking it to 10 stories instead of seven.
There is administrative procedures in the downtown plan that allow the director to make adjustments under the the form-based code. So they're, you know, using that, there might be ways to get higher than 90 feet. But we're, we're going through the whole periodic update. All this is going to come back to the council anyway.
Absolutely. Well, very good. Well, I think we can move on to the next item, which is review of the downtown subarea plan. For this, we have our planning manager, Tiffany Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So some of this will actually overlap a little with what the conversation has been over the last hour or so. And I'll just begin with walking through the memo and what was provided to you, starting on page 44 of your packet. And then, of course, we can go to questions and answers as you wish. So as mentioned in the memo, this is the second biennial review of the downtown plan-related development code and then the planned action, environmental impact statement. The way this was adopted in 2018 is there were two different ordinances. One included the plan and the development code. The other included the planned action. So ordinances 695 and 696 have language within them talking about review every several years of a couple of things. Back in 2020, the first review which happened, there were no changes made, in part because it was less than 18 months since the whole package had been adopted. We're now in our second review. And as you see here on page 44 or page one of this particular memo, the planning commission has not recommended any substantive changes to the plan, the development regulations or the planned action, but are recommending a change in the timing of future reviews for all of the package in order to essentially tie it into ongoing comprehensive plan reviews and updates because subareas are in fact part of the comprehensive plan. And the timing and, and required effort to do this every two years tends to be often an, an effort of diminishing returns, if you will. So looking at this on a five-year basis rather than a two-year basis is what's recommended. However, if there is something that is more time sensitive, it can be incorporated into the annual comprehensive plan and development regulation review if that's needed. So under 695, that ordinance, the council has said that the impact of the code in implementing the plan would be reviewed every two years. And then under ordinance 696, it's looking at the downtown planned action ordinance and the transportation fee cost basis every two years. There is additional background information. Several of the council members seated right now were not around actually in 2018 when this was adopted. So there is some summary information in attachment B that provides a little more background. But the rest of this memo is talking about city catalyst actions, which was actually some of the questions that the mayor had a little earlier, as well as progress to date on various contaminated properties, various transportation mitigation fees collected, et cetera. Here is a summary on the left-hand side of that top chart. Talks about the six-year transportation improvement plan, which was in place when the downtown package was adopted. And then there were a number in the right-hand side of that box of projects that were added to that list within the, the downtown subarea package. And then in the following year, a number of those ideas that were raised as part of the downtown plan were adopted into the Transportation Improvement Program. You see those starting on the bottom of page three and going on to the next page, just giving you some status updates that some of those projects have been completed. Others are slated for funding. You also have information about some pending projects in the downtown, which in some respect will help with spurring private development. You have the discussion about sidewalks being added to a number of the downtown or town center corridors. And if you'll recall, if you move over to page five, there were also park improvements discussed, including a downtown park and also a green street loop. And so those two things are also discussed in the plan, the, the code and the planned action. What you see here is the parks. I'm not sure if it's called the capital facilities plan, I think it is. Planning for those things, a downtown park of either being two acres at 15 million or 30 million for four acres. And that would, in either size, incorporate a spray park if that were to be decided to be done by the city. And then again, there's also this green street loop idea where you're taking an area of Bridgeport and Gravelly Lake and then into and through the town center up and around as kind of a, a special non-motorized pedestrian corridor that would encourage people to get out of their cars and enjoy the space of the downtown. This has been talked about a number of times, but Kite Realty did purchase the town center in 2021. The city has met with the new owners several times now and continue to have conversation about what their interest and willingness is to redesign use of space within the downtown and also the potential of a downtown park happening on some of their property. And I would say, as far as I'm aware, that they are receptive to both. As Ms. Newton mentioned this evening, Kite Realty has said that they are not residential developers, but they are willing to work with local developers to help with mixed use projects here in the town center. The bottom of page 49 and on to page 50 just clarifies the status of four different properties that are within the downtown boundaries that have been considered contaminated sites. That's information through May of this year. And then if you jump to page eight of the memo or 51 of the whole packet, you'll see the downtown projects, which were included from January of 2020 through the end of 2021. And then you'll also see a conversation or a discussion of transportation mitigation fees on page nine. And as you see in the paragraph above the table, twenty-three of the thirty-four projects listed were not assessed any transportation mitigation fee at all because of the way the system was set up when the downtown package was adopted, that the the transportation mitigation fee is only assessed against a net increase in transportation trips. So there were a number of those that either were at an equal number or less of traffic than a previous use within a particular location. So as it stands through the end of twenty-one, approximately a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars had been collected through the transportation mitigation fee. The remainder of the report, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on, given what was just discussed by council with Mr. Buwer and Ms. Newton, but this is a little bit about economic development activity in the downtown. It has continued. Obviously, it was affected and slowed by COVID, as was everything. But the continuation and permit activity and fees continue to go up within twenty twenty-two in particular. The conclusion again is to take a look at the timing of future reviews is what the recommendation is. Otherwise, it's a matter of incorporating potentially in the city's future budget to continue with placemaking, as was discussed earlier tonight, the parks within the downtown, the green street loop. I think the fact that you have Motor Avenue already improved and then the demolition that may be coming of the old QFC property will be another catalyst in and of itself. But as it stands, this is where we sit with this biennial review. The next step would be a city council public hearing on September sixth regarding the changes to the two ordinances that would affect how often this would come before you for review. And then any other amendments the city council may want to have. And then after that, it's a decision of making those amendments when the council's ready.
Great, pretty short and simple, Mr. Anderson, and then Mr. Bransitter.
Two questions. First, on your page fifty-two chart of the transportation mitigation fees and recognizing that we kind of manipulated the formula and added that as an option. I love barbecue and I drink coffee. Can you, can you explain why Barbecue's Pete's with much lower traffic and existing parking has to pay more than Dutch Brothers? It has a continuous line of cars.
That was a location that had never been occupied, from what I understand, in the town center, that particular spot where Barbecue Pete's went. And so it was not able to go with the net increase or decrease compared to a private use in that space. Right, yeah. And I don't think that's ever been used, right?
Barbecue Pete's went into an existing building.
It went into an existing building that had never had anything inside that unit. And so they weren't able, as the city analyzed the proposed traffic activity, they were not able to say compared to the last use in this unit, you have this much more, this much less. It was, this is a new use in this spot.
And in part, and Dutch Bros went into a place that had been it's kind of a brown feel, destroyed building.
Do you remember what was it?
I don't recall.
Intuitively, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, well, it's based on whatever the last use was since incorporation of the city. So I don't recall what that was as well, but it is, it goes with the property. So it's compared to the traffic that's generated by the new use as compared to the traffic that was generated by the previous use. Is that's the way it's supposed to work?
Well, there was there was no traffic at the Dutch Brothers site for as long as I can remember, and I've been here thirty-two years. So that doesn't.
Mr. Anderson, we can come back and provide you the specifics on how the calculation was.
That was cut off of another site.
But my recollection was, was Barbecue Pete's, that specific suite had been vacant. And as a result of the type of use as a restaurant, they were required to come up with a sixty thousand dollar fee. There was quite an objection over it. And Dutch Brothers, too, was also not happy with the payment of the fee. But I can't tell you this evening the difference in why the numbers came out the way they did. But we are happy to share that information.
I'd like to see that somewhere, because, you know, just because we have a formula doesn't mean it's right. We invented it. We might be able to make it more reasonable.
Okay.
Thanks. The second question was with respect to, you know, the downtown center site, when we were talking about heights. We have to make the GMA gods happy. Aside from parking and shade, what would the disadvantages of building a fifteen, twenty-story building in in downtown be?
Disadvantage to the city? Or?
Just if we, if we change the zoning to take a, essentially take our artificial cap off height and say, you can put residential monthly family here. That's where we're going to put a lot of those eighty thousand people. Aside from the next-door neighbor being in the shade, parking, traffic mitigation, which is going to have to be done for eighty thousand people, no matter where they are. What disadvantages would changing zoning in that matter?
Remember that the type of code you have is a combination of base zoning plus form-based code. That's where you get the, the maximum height is off the base zoning. You can change the form-based code to do away with the references to the base zoning as far as height. You can do any you want. Form-based, form-based code basically doesn't even get into heights. You can build whatever the developer wants to do, as long as you meet certain design criteria. So that's not a hard question.
So, but what I can see that there'll be traffic that would be if you created that degree of density and you're going to have traffic issues. But if you got to put eight thousand, allow for eighty thousand people, you're going to have traffic issues somewhere. You're going to have parking issues. Same answer. You're going to have parking issues somewhere, except if you ride on the bus line. That probably still won't satisfy it. And some neighbors are going to be in the shade, which is undesirable. But wouldn't that help us satisfying the folks with respect to GMA? We drew an artificial line and said, you can go up?
If you're speaking to the issue at hand, if you want to go up, you can do form-based code with no limitation on building height. Keep in mind, if you're going to change the form-based code, we have to go back and take a look at the planned action ordinance, the two go hand in hand. Because the planned action ordinance would take a look at the impact that increased height would have on traffic and circulation. So yes, we can do it if this is what the council desires.
I'm not sure anybody would do it. I'm asking if, if what the negatives would be.
Oh.
And would it be an advantage with respect to complying with GMA's artificial push of eighty thousand people?
As it stands right now, Councilmember Anderson, the plan for density within both Lakewood Station and downtown, if those occur as anticipated, the city would be able to get to the group twenty forty-four growth targets without too much trouble. Maybe, I think if I remember right, it's about fifteen units a year outside of those two subareas. So practically speaking, if those two were to maximize the use of land and the density allowed and and actually built, you wouldn't need to do much higher. It would just happen. The question, of course, is as the council was just talking about, cost benefit to the various heights and the construction changes and the costs as a result, and whether the rents could be realized to help pay for the increased construction cost of higher heights.
I'm looking at the next item on our agenda, which is, you know, essentially takes a polar opposite considerations, which is say, keep, keep the creek canopy. So you can't build six plexes on every single-family residence slot, because you have to cut down all the trees to do that.
Yeah, if I could, we have a couple of land use priority policies bumping up against each other. Affordable housing, anti-displacement of existing housing, climate change and density and more intensive land uses within the city's boundaries. And how those play against each other over time, I don't think anyone can tell. It's not going to be unique to Lakewood, but Lakewood does have unique instances which are making this maybe come to light faster than other jurisdictions may feel it.
Thank you.
Mr. Bransitter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To go back to the transportation mitigation fees and I'm sure that the way that we set it up, that was an explanation that was given us by the consultant that I didn't fully understand. But that we, and we as a console, we moved the percentage around so that it was only going to fifty percent of a set of of transportation costs that was a target total fee collection to be able to go and do that. But looking at the charts that Mr. Anderson referred to with the many developments that had no fee at all. It does seem to me that that is a formula that we need to relook at in terms of options in terms of how it is affecting businesses at both ends of the chart. Okay, that and, you know, that speaks for something that needs to go. This is a somewhere in the terms of a combination incentive and disincentive. And its value as an incentive is greatest if we can generate the money to actually do the projects that the fees are designed to support to get the green street loop, get the traffic signals and redo the Gravelly Lake Drive and the other streets that are, that are there to create the sense of place that Mr. Buwer talked about that'll make this a place that folks that can afford greater rents to do that. And then I also think that, yes, adjusting the form-based code is, you know, the purpose of having the biennial reviews was to look to see whether there are some adjustments to regulations and fees that would get us to better outcomes or more towards the outcomes that we envisioned when we did this. So I'm not in favor of the planning commission's recommendation to change the review schedule. I guess I'm even a little bit disappointed that the review this biennium is so cursory and is essentially just reviewing how often they have to review it. We set that up biennially because we thought that we would be wanting to make adjustments as we went along to go forward. I'm not ready to totally buy into blaming COVID for everything that doesn't happen. Okay. As a consul, we have talked over the past three years about saying that we really needed to have a very focused discussion around the incentives for business development that the consul can put in place as tools for the CED to be able to go forward. And somehow, there's always been some other priority for our discussions during retreats or what we would want to do. And actually doing that as part of biennial review, whether it's this one or going forward, but the cycle to just go past this biennial review, even though we have already passed in the plan the period of time of when the short-term implementation strategies were supposed to be completed in in, 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 in one to three years. And by that, by twenty twenty-four, we'll have gone past where all the midterm implementation strategies were supposed to have taken place, which are the three to five-year range. And we kind of set that up so that we were going to take a closer look than we have in the past at this plan every two years, both in terms of what is actually happening and what can we do to change the the direction or rate of doing it, whether it's to adjust the form-based code or other things to be able to go and do that. The next review is scheduled for twenty twenty-four and we can acknowledge that twenty twenty-four is a really difficult time to do a review, given that the entire comprehensive plan has to be redone to be able to go and do that. And then to wait five more years after that before we do another review doesn't seem like we're doing it. And I understand that if an emergency comes up or there's some new state law that requires us to change something to do that. But that's a reactive strategy, not a proactive strategy of looking at the plan and adjusting it and making it work. So, you know, I would much rather think that we should stay on it. The review that we've done this time, let's do something in the next two years that we provide guidance and some, some direction for the twenty twenty-four review. And then that we do it again in twenty twenty-six. And the other thing that we did is that the other major subarea plan, the Lakewood Station District Plan, we built that same timeline into that plan, biennial reviews. But we did it in the opposite year of this plan so that we could do justice to both. That and I understand that the five-year cycle keeps us in good standing with the folks in Olympia that require at least a five-year cycle. But I don't think that it's in our best act proactive interest to move this plan and move the development in the downtown plan forward. I think we should get to do that. And I think we should note that we've done this plan, but we as a council should be doing some things before twenty twenty-four to provide input for the twenty twenty-four review. So I think that there are areas that can be looked at, that, that, that adjustments are worth deciding whether they, we should make them or not. And going to a five-year cycle in the long term doesn't doesn't seem proactive enough to me. So I'm thinking that we could note that the review took place, but not make the changes that the planning commission is recommending to the, to the cycle of reviews.
Yeah, it does beg the question, if we haven't had the activity that, you know, we desire in the central business district, why would we push out review for a longer period of time than necessary if we can incentivize the development that we seek? Which might require some more periodic review of incentives and and market and feedback from the development community. So any thought on that? Folks, Mr. Bransitter's comment on that, because I don't want to go to a public hearing necessarily. We can still decide after the public hearing whether or not we want to adopt the recommendations. So I guess we can wait until then. Anything further on that?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good. I do appreciate receiving some feedback on the trip mitigation fee on those two larger ones because I remain somewhat concerned that it becomes an impediment to some of the smaller, maybe perhaps not national chain folks, but smaller business folks that might like to look at locating in the town center or Central Business District area, but for some of those fee issues. But that remains to be seen. Okay, so in the absence of anything further on the downtown subarea plan, biennial review, we'll turn to the tree preservation code update. And I believe we've got our planning manager, Courtney Brunel, perhaps on Zoom? Or perhaps not. Is she there? Ah, there she is.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I am joined by Lisa Bruder from Burt Consulting and Alex Hancock from Planet Geo. If we could please have Alex join the Zoom call. Alex is the certified arborist who works with Planet Geo and has really guided our discussions regarding the urban forestry program, which is one of the primary topics that we'll be bringing back to you this evening. This study session is really meant to assist in answering some of the questions that came up on August 8th during our last city council meeting, as well as, again, to expand on the urban forestry program option. So with that, if we have Alex. There she is, okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Alex.
Okay, great. Am I able to share my screen?
You should be able to. Do you want to give it a try?
I'm sorry, I don't see the option. Okay, join us panelists.
Great. Alex, you're muted.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, council, thank you, Courtney. I'll just pull up the presentation and share that. Okay, you can see my screen?
Yes, all good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, good evening, council. As Courtney said, the content of tonight's presentation includes some responses to council's questions from the last study session. Some additional information about what an urban forestry program would look like and plenty of time for Q and A. Okay, so to get started, a question was posed regarding the tree preservation in relation to short plat subdivisions. So currently, the code does not require tree preservation when the lots created during the subdivision process are less than 17,000 square feet. So as we went through this process of discussions with the ad hoc committee and the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission voted to keep this exemption intact, except for the Oregon white oak. And that would be protected regardless of lot size per their recommendation. For the ad hoc committee's recommendation, which is option one here, the recommendation is for the elimination of the lot size exemption so that tree preservation would not be contingent on lot size. Additionally, the committee recommended preservation of tree canopy area rather than count. Our next slides will cover that discussion in more detail. But in option two here, you see that there's sorry, Courtney, did you want to say something there? Okay, all good. The section option here states that as for additional considerations for council, it is provided here that we would strike the 17,000 square foot threshold and instead require a tree survey and tree retention plan to be submitted as part of subdivision application to show that the applicant has met the tree preservation requirements as part of the section.
Got a quick question for you from Mr. Anderson there.
Yeah, this was, this was my concern. It was an option considered much like, I don't know, it's the current restriction. This, I would call it the resub plat or reshort plat provision. So, you know, for example, if you short plat property, you can't then short plat the short plat immediately after that. There's a long-term restriction on being able to do that. Was an option similar to that considered with respect to the trees? So if you have a subdivision, you can't, here you have a subdivision, you can't subdivide into an exemption. Why should you be able to short plat into an exemption? Was that considered as an option?
Councilmember Anderson, we didn't specifically consider that option, but I do think that this option two does provide more protection than what we have today by striking the allowance that there's no
Yeah, that wasn't my question. I would consider about, I'm personally in favor of retaining an exemption for smaller lots. But I'd hate to see somebody take a nine-acre parcel and short plat it into something where they cleared it.
Certainly, and so we can definitely work on this language a little bit more under this existing section to have a time limit on the lot size. I think that the intention here was, again, just for those new residential subdivisions under 17,000 square feet. They would be required to show tree preservation as part of their short plat and in essence, protect those trees long-term per the plat condition. But if you would prefer that we explore taking that one step further and having a time limitation rather than having it recorded alongside with the plat or as part of the decision, we can certainly explore that option as well.
Thank you.
Okay, I will continue on. This is a quick recap into the deep dive that we did on the 17,000 square foot lots. So as we just discussed, currently, the single-family residential lots under 17,000 square feet are exempt from the tree protection standards. The map on the right here is all of the single-family residential lots in Lakewood. The citywide tree canopy assessment results showed us that 59% of the city's tree canopy cover is on single-family residential land. And you can see that further broken down into the R1 to R4 zoning districts here, with the majority of that canopy on R3 land, which is indicated in purple on the map. And that, that zoning district contains 31% of the city's overall tree canopy. In comparison, the map on the right here shows only single-family residential lots under 17,000 square feet, which you can see is a significant proportion of those single-family residential lots. It's actually 82% of those lots. And to look at this from a different perspective, the table at the bottom of the slide shows the total land area of the single-family residential lots that are exempt. So that works out to be 58% of the total single-family residential land area that is exempt from tree preservation. And like I said, this was just a brief overview to give you the background that was provided to the ad hoc committee and the Planning Commission on this topic, but happy to answer any questions. And if not, I will continue on. Okay.
Mr. Brandstetter has one?
Sure.
That I am seeing some options here, but what is it that's being recommended to us by the Planning Commission? Are are they planning to keep the 17,000 square foot rules the same as they currently are? With the exception of four Oregon white oaks? Or are they recommending something, as Mr. Anderson suggested, that when you do a either a short plat or a subdivision, that there's a tree retention plan that then gets recorded onto the plat so that the trees that are protected under the tree protection plan are that becomes an obligation that goes on property owners going forward?
Councilmember Brandstetter, the Planning Commission forwarded a recommendation to maintain the 17,000 square foot residential lot exemption with the exception of Oregon white oaks. The issue that we were just discussing is an additional consideration that was brought up by the city council, which was not a recommendation or an item that was discussed before the Planning Commission. And so that would be an additional change to, again, protect the trees on those existing large properties that are looking to subdivide under 17,000 square feet, where currently no protections would be in place. And in the future, under the Planning Commission's recommendations, again, no protections would be in place.
So we are looking for some level of protection for properties that are over 17,000 square feet, but that are going to be divided through either the subdivision or short plat process so that it's, they're not clear-cuttable if there are significant trees present.
That's correct. And that was the first item. Those, those red lines in code revisions would offer that protection here. So the way that the draft Planning Commission recommendation was written is similar to the existing code, which is that for new residential subdivisions, again, with that lot size, there will be no specific tree preservation required. So we are bringing forward a recommendation that we strike that language and instead require a tree survey, as you would find with a larger plat, to protect those trees per a tree retention plan that would be reported along with short plats as well as long plats.
So when I look at it, and I'm listening to Mr. Anderson's content, it says, instead of saying for new residential subdivisions, it would say for new residential subdivisions and short plats, where the initial size of the property is greater than 17,000 square feet, we would get to the the tree survey shall be included as part of the process and recorded on the plat. So is that change doable to add the, the short plats that are creating a lots instead of as a, which is still a significant piece of ground that could be clear-cut if we don't include the short plats in it?
Yes, that is certainly an amendment that we can bring forward. We can rework this language found in item B to, again, continue to allow for the removal to construct the streets and utilities and other onsite improvements as we do for standard plat developments. But make sure that short plats are part of the consideration for tree protection and that a tree retention plan will be reported. So we can bring forward a little bit clearer language to the, to the next meeting. Absolutely.
So if we wanted to say that we were considering that and we wanted people who are planning to in two weeks, come to the public hearing to tell us what they think, is there a way to to do that in a way that they know that that's an option we're considering?
Certainly, yeah, we can have that written into the memo as well as we'll have a draft ordinance at that time ahead of the, the public hearing for folks to be able to provide public comments on.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, next.
Okay, very good. So this next slide is in response to the question about the definition of tree stand. In urban forestry, there is no precise or widely accepted definition for how many trees constitute a tree stand. In traditional forestry, this term has been used to describe an area of forest vegetation whose site conditions, past history and current species composition are sufficiently uniform to be managed as a unit. So the images on the slide here indicate that a tree stand can be made up of the same species or varying species, and it can be the same age or mixed ages. Specifically, in urban forestry, some research has referenced tree stands as a generation of street trees or neighborhood trees which have been planted at the same time. And therefore, they would require similar maintenance needs at similar intervals. With all of this information in mind, it's absolutely acceptable for the city of Lakewood to create a definition, a specific definition for the purpose of tree preservation within the city that defines tree stand as two and more trees, if that's what the city wishes to do.
Because there was some recommendation by the ad hoc committee that one Gary Oak could satisfy a definition of stand of trees, right? As I recall the recommendation, maybe I'm
Mr. Mayor, they were wanting for there to be consideration for individual trees and/or stands. So what the Planning Commission forwarded as a recommendation was that individual trees not receive that protection and instead it would be stands of trees. And at the council meeting on August 8th, we were requested to bring forward some information on what defines a stand of trees. And we had mentioned, we had suggested two at that time, two or more, but we wanted to provide again some more background as to how we came to that definition.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, my question too is probably something I was told and forgot, which is what extra protections are included in the recommendation that are cued by being a stand as opposed to a tree?
It depends on the diameter at base height of that stand, the average stand. So if the, the average diameter is under 20 inches, then we would continue to permit that under the tree preservation code. And if that stand average DBH is over 20 inches, then it would be considered part of the critical areas. And so we would also incorporate the regulations found in chapter 14.
Hey, what, okay. I needed, I need tree stand for dummies, excuse me. So what, what happens if, if we define, we have a finite definition of stand, which I think we need because it doesn't have a general, generally accepted definition. So you have to have some definition that folks in development department can hang their hat on and people who have property can rely on. And we can say two, we can say four. Pick something definite, have a definition. What if you have four trees? City Lakewood says, stand is four trees. What happens then that would not happen if we said a stand is five trees? What's, what would the difference be?
Councilmember Anderson, the time that we would look at this would be specific to Gary Oak trees. And so in that instance, we would be looking at the average of the number of trees that are part of that stand in order to calculate that diameter at breast height. So we would be requesting that they go out and measure each one of the trees that are part of that stand that could be impacted or, again, that average of diameter at breast height to determine which regulations we are using in order to permit the proposed removal.
So it's the denominator of the fraction?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
Okay, very good. So council recommended that we explore an additional option for tree replacement that is based on carbon that is based on carbon sequestration, which is the natural function of the tree to take carbon from the atmosphere and turn it into woody mass. So this has the the concept of carbon sequestration has been extensively studied by scientists and many tools exist today that can calculate the amount of carbon that a tree can sequester. So using the Forest Service iTree Species Tool, which is part of the iTree Tool Suite, which is very commonly used. It's Forest Service and collaborative effort among many national groups. So we were able to use that tool to generate a list of species that are recommended for sequestering carbon in Lakewood, Washington. So it's geography specific. That is the list that you see on the right here. Equally as important to species selection is where you plant the trees on the property. So strategic tree placement relative to the structures on the property can result in lower energy consumption and therefore avoided CO2 emissions. So what we've outlined here as red lines are a combined option C here based on carbon reductions. So that takes into account both the tree species and the location of those tree species. And available to take questions on that now if you have any.
Mr. Branstad.
Just to clarify the the red line, because I think this is a good way to look at it because car- carbon reductions are as important as tree canopy and aesthetics and things in terms of what we're trying to do. I think different people around the conversation have different priorities, but for for the city, carbon reduction needs to be one of them to be able to go and do that. What I'm trying to see in the red lines here is fewer replacement trees, but is this, but I don't see a number associated that is and is it fewer replacement trees down to a one to one diameter replacement or something? I think there needs fewer is just too vague. But you can go go to do that. The other thing is in our current development regulations, we sort of for all different sorts of landscaping, whether it's trees or other things, we more or less have a standard of if you put in that in landscaping, you've got to maintain nurture it for three years. But if we're going to say this is based on the fact of what the trees, the replacement trees will do at maturity, which is thirty years, that then there needs to be some mechanism such as the replacement trees need to be protected in a in a tree retention plan or something like that. Or set, maybe an arborist would say that if a tree makes it to ten years, it'll probably make it to thirty. And we want to say that it's got to be nurtured to 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 survive for ten years. I don't know. That would be something that a that an arborist would be able to better better say. But I think those two elements are part of the fewer replacement trees. In other words, how far can you go to in in terms of fewer? And yeah, because theoretically, if you're cutting down one large tree and you plant one tree, when it matures, it'll replace that one tree that was originally there. But I don't think that's that's the intent we want to do because there's no assurance of survival to maturity, but I don't know what the right numbers are. So I just like to see some numbers around those two things. How long they have to be taken care of and what's the bottom range of fewer?
Okay, yes, absolutely. We can we can add language there that would be but not less than a ratio of one to one or other language there. And in terms of how long they should be taken care of, I think the goal would be to have tree removal permitting be required then for any tree that, you know, as it reaches a certain DBH for they would be protected. So hopefully by the in the first few years, it would hopefully reach the stage that it would be protected by the code again and then require permit. But but that's something that we can look more into and discuss how to incorporate it.
Isn't Mr. Branstad's point that if they in good faith plant the requisite trees to meet the standard, but they die after a year or two? What requirement do we have for them to maintain?
I think even in the city's experience in Fort Silicon Park where we planted a significant number of replacement trees was when we removed trees to put in the the trail. We worked hard at maintaining them for a couple of years, but but they haven't all survived.
Right.
Okay, that it's unrealistic to expect that that every replacement tree will become eventually become a mature tree. But we ought to establish some standard of nurture them for a period of time that is consistent with a greater likelihood of it becoming a mature tree. And that particular tree ought to get some type of preservation status, either because it's in a tree preservation plan or it's which is or documented on a plat or 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 something else. And I like the idea that we're using the we're using the trees that scientifically are the best trees for carbon sequestration as as opposed to planting fir trees or soft softwood evergreen trees as opposed to hardwood. These are all look like they're all hardwood deciduous trees.
And we can make.
One because five hundred years, you can sequester a lot of carbon.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Sure, absolutely. And within the code, we do make reference to the industry standards for tree care. So that is something that is referenced and we can reinforce that in the code as well.
Just tough to enforce, but yeah, anyway.
Yes, and yeah.
Okay, next.
Okay, so a question was also raised about mitigation requirements at the time of site development, which was discussed a bit already. It is a valid concern that sometimes developers choose the option to pay into a mitigation fund rather than prioritizing tree preservation and or onsite replacement. So we researched the approaches used in Gig Harbor, Mount Lake Terrace, Mercer Island and Olympia to draft this language for consideration, which states for any site proposed to be developed or cleared, at least fifty percent of the significant trees located outside the buildable area of the lot shall be retained if they are rated in good condition or better by an ISA certified arborist. And so this several of the other codes that we researched have similar language. And this was some language that we felt was appropriate for Lakewood.
So I think this is clear. A question from many constituents who are monitoring this has been a question has been. So I've got my existing single family residential home. I might want to subdivide my parcel or I might want to build an ADU on the existing tax parcel. I've got a significant tree located inside the buildable area of the lot. Do I have to retain it?
In that scenario, Mr. Mayor, based off of the fact that that was the only potential buildable area and going back to tree species. If it was a non oak, then it would very likely be a non issue. If it wasn't a large oak as part of an oak stand, then there may be additional permit and replacement requirements, mitigation requirements. But ultimately, if there was a proposed structure to be located there, then yes, they would be able to remove the tree.
Including an oak tree, right?
Yes.
Okay. Next.
Okay. So and now we're moving on to discussion of an urban forestry program. So as the city of Lakewood considers updates to the code, implementation of canopy goals and management of a city tree fund, the creation of an urban forestry program would be a great first step in organizing these functions and tracking progress over time. So urban forestry data from canopy assessments and tree inventories provide a basis for tree management and understanding of what the city has and a way to prioritize where it's going. Tree canopy assessment was completed as part of this tree code update process. And during that process, we found that Lakewood is covered by twenty six percent tree canopy. And this is a number that can and should be tracked over time. Five years is typically the reasonable amount of time to see change, although data is becoming more accessible and cost effective for more frequent analysis. So looking at both the tree canopy data and tree inventory data, a tree inventory gathers information about the trees such as their species, size, condition, and many other factors that can't be gathered with a canopy analysis. So with a tree inventory, the city can plan accordingly and prioritize maintenance cycles for city owned trees. Planet Geo provided an outline of various levels of tree inventorying for Lakewood. Public tree inventory is standard for most municipalities because those are likely the trees that are maintained by the city in parks and the public rights away. So we did outline some estimates for city tree inventorying and park tree inventorying and timelines and costs to go along with that. For private tree inventorying, that quickly becomes much larger scope. As we know from the tree canopy assessment, the majority of tree canopy is located on private property. And additionally, as property owners need to give consent for access to their properties, this can take time and in some cases it just isn't possible. But we did outline what it some estimates based on all trees on residential property, only oak trees on residential property, oak trees on residential, commercial and industrial property. And these numbers are all for boots on the ground inventorying where we actually have field crews out assessing trees. The final option, which you see on the bottom left here, is a tree count based on aerial imagery. And this is using advanced technology that provides an alternative to boots on the ground inventorying. This option just provides tree locations, a total count of the trees citywide and the approximate crown size. But there are no tree characteristics included here, so that it wouldn't be tree species or diameter at breast height or or any conditions about the trees. So between this slide and the last slide, these are the primary data points that an urban forestry program would collect and maintain over time. And happy to answer questions about these at this time.
So did we have a sense of what other cities locally have done with regard to their own urban forestry program? Do we have a slide on that? I forget.
In terms of the data for, so we I can just speak from experience. Planet Geo has done canopy assessments for many cities in the Pacific Northwest and throughout King County and Pierce County especially. Not every city has a tree inventory. They do get expensive and typically that's something that either is funded by grant cycle or an investment of funds. And so that's typical, it's very typical that a street tree inventory would be the first step for a tree inventory and then to include park trees after that. Private tree inventories are very rare, although they do occur. And I don't mean to say that it doesn't happen, but it public tree inventory is more so the standard.
Well, I was more focused on the urban forestry program. Likely takes place after whatever tree inventory is done, whether public or private, right?
Yes, and for that, we also have Lisa Bruder from Work Consulting on who has done a lot of the analysis for other jurisdictions. I know, Alex, I don't think that we have a slide. We go to the next slide.
Courtney, this is Lisa. I believe in the packet on pages two sixty six to two sixty nine. There's a summary of tree canopy goals and generally the communities that have established the goals have have done that kind of canopy assessment. And on page two sixty nine, there's some links to urban forest plans and programs by some example cities. So for example, I think Lacey and Olympia and Renton and Tacoma have urban forestry programs and canopy goals.
Can you have a canopy goal like is recommended without an urban forestry program? Or how do you monitor it in the absence of that?
I think you would likely see it placed with another department that would run the reports and monitoring and provide that as part of an extension of a department's work plan. So right now this is managed primarily by the current planning department. And if in the absence of the implementation of an urban forestry department, we would likely see if we wanted to move forward with doing some some type of estimated tree count, which I think would be helpful for implementing. Especially if we're talking about specific species of trees for us to have a baseline to provide to property owners of the number of trees on the property. It could be a valuable resource for members of the public. Current planning would be a potential location to ask for the ones that typically would be the permits would be the ones to work with the public for those for those items.
Just to expand on that, we do see in other cities if there's stormwater department or somewhere in public works that also maintains trees for the the city maintains trees that those that that department may manage the data, whether it's inventory or canopy. And canopy goals can be set, but really if you you should have a plan in order to have that implementation and goals and strategies to get there.
Got it. I think Mr. Anderson had a question, but.
Yeah, is there a comparable jurisdiction around here that has an urban forestry department or division or individual? And what would the tasks be? And this is susceptible to handling it by an interlocal agreement if it's an area of expertise in monitoring instead of being in active position regulating.
Courtney and Alex, you can add to what I have here, but I believe Tacoma has three staff based on their stormwater program. It's funded through that program, but a lot of other cities that have such a program, they'll have one urban forester. So for example, Renton has an urban forester, Olympia has an urban forester.
Yes, and Planet Geo worked with both Tacoma and Renton and Chris Pfeifer is on the call. If he could join to talk a little bit more about those cities, he is available to respond further on that question. If if he could be promoted to talk.
Yes, hi there, Chris Pfeifer with Planet Geo and want to thank you for this presentation here. Alex is doing a good. Yes. Hi there, Chris Pfeifer with Planet Geo and want to thank you for this presentation here. Alex is doing a good job of responding to questions, but I did want to chime in a little bit on the urban forestry programs for other cities like mentioned Renton and Tacoma. So one thing that I wanted to mention with Tacoma is that you know, they're utilizing canopy data beyond the urban forestry program. They incorporated into the Tacoma Equity Index. And like Alex said, it's also incorporated into stormwater programs and efforts relating to sustainability. So without the urban forestry program, I believe, you know, there would be other agencies and staff involved with monitoring these metrics. But it is guided by an urban forestry program that is involved with the management of public trees on along streets and in parks. And then also the community engagement and education aspects as well as reviewing plans and design and also the tree permitting processes. And then they also manage the tree fund, oversee, you know, commissions and boards that relate to urban forestry. And then I, that's for the Tacoma example. And then for Renton, they oversee parks and the urban forest, looking at street trees and and park trees and they're, you know, similar in the oversight that the program has and a large portion of what the urban forestry program is now managing is their tree planting program. That's with an overarching canopy goal that is guided by an urban forest management plan. So all of this ordinance changes and enforcement is typically or generally recommended to be guided by an urban forestry program. And when you look to set canopy goals, the program should be the main authority overseeing it and, you know, setting realistic milestones on what can be achieved, but it's really important to tie into other programs in the city like stormwater, sustainability, climate related, and then of course, you know, how canopy is impacted with plant, uh, planning and development. So hopefully that just gives you some overview of other urban forestry programs. We did do their urban forest management plans for both Tacoma and Renton. I can expand on that if there are questions, but there's just so much that we could cover. Hopefully that just gives you a high level overview there. Thank you.
Does that prompt any other questions, counsel? I had a general question on the subject. Two slides back, it talked a little bit about data that reflected the, yep, that one just prior, just clicked past it, that our canopy had grown from two thousand eleven to nineteen, actually.
Yes, that's correct. And this does happen frequently when you have a development boom and trees are planted and then those trees grow over time. And and so as long as those trees are preserved, then the canopy can continue to grow. And so even when you do see development happening in different areas of the city, tree preservation really plays a key role in maintaining and growing the canopy as well.
Got it. Any other questions and next subject area? Unless we're pretty close to done, it looks like.
We are. We just have one more slide. So and it's on the same topic. So as as part of setting canopy goals and growing the canopy, these maps on this slide were created in the exercise to explore prioritizing future tree plantings based on equity. So a comparison of tree canopy data is here compared with socioeconomic and demographic data. And so you have a tree equity score, which is something that was created by American Forests in the top left corner. Then you have can tree canopy of less than twenty five percent. Then you have average temperatures of greater than eighty five degrees. Then bottom left in the browns and golds, it's the available planting area greater than fifty percent. And then bottom center is people of color greater than fifty percent. And then bottom right is low employment. And this is all organized by census block groups. And in the bottom left, it's a priority composite map. So as we laid out canopy goal scenarios for thirty percent canopy goal, thirty five percent and forty percent. It was recommended that if a thirty percent canopy goal is recommended, then these census block groups in the priority composite map are prioritized. And then if a canopy goal of thirty five or forty percent is proposed, is recommended to use these same prioritization strategies to start and then to build a more robust urban forestry program with additional staff and resources. You could begin to include additional strategies and build a more robust plan to reach more areas of the city on both private and public property. So many strategies that could be taken, but this was an overview of what we looked at.
Very good. Any questions on that? That's really helpful information, actually. Anything else?
That's, that's all we have for content, but happy to answer questions. And we do have a few extra slides on tree equity score if you do have questions on that.
A quick question, going back to the last slide on the priority composite. So lead me through how we might enact some policies on that. Would it be the everything we've talked about, obviously, but the replanting in some of those areas that are already, I don't want to say cleared, but we have a lot of the folks who've been expressing concerns over some of the light industrial areas that appear to be on the lower center of the priority composite map.
Sure. So a few different ways that you could approach this, really, you could make reference to these priority areas to have stricter regulations for tree preservation or to have stricter regulations for tree replanting to if if a, an urban forestry program is is created and then a planting program is created, then to direct all the funds and planting priorities to these census block groups, maybe they would get priority for street tree plantings before other areas of the city. But as far as code recommendations, you could make reference to stricter regulations here.
Got it. And we have not yet done that in the draft recommendations, correct?
I believe in some of the incentives, we may have referenced these areas. Is that correct?
I don't believe that we've made direct reference to these areas rather than comprehensive plan amendment that is proposed stated informed by equity. Generally, that was the language. And so, and this was what had been considered when we drafted that language. One item that the planning commission was concerned with is wanting to make sure that these weren't the only census block groups potentially that received that type of attention. And that we continue to look at all aspects of equity as we're reevaluating these strategies.
Okay, I think I understand that. It's helpful information to me. Mr. Buwer, did you have something to add?
Just very, very briefly, one of the things we're contemplating is using University of Washington Evan School one more time to actually work with us on developing an urban forestry program and providing answers to the questions that the council is asking tonight. Really what's before the city council is the tree preservation code. That next piece would be an urban forestry program, if that's what you wanted to do. The I thought would be to use the Evan School to glean that information, bring it back to the city council and actually look at what a program would look like and what it would cost. So that's something that's on the back burner, but it's coming quickly. We have to have our materials to Evan School by August thirty first.
Got it. That's outside of the proposed code ordinance per se, except for the establishment of
Right.
an urban forestry program.
But council asked a question, what this would look like. You have some general information. I'd like to provide more before you're ready to make a policy decision.
Absolutely. Anyone else have questions, Mr. Buwer or Ms. Brunel? If not, much for the presentation, very helpful information and updates on the questions presented. So we will take this to what, one more session, I think, before we take it to a final review, Mr. Buwer.
Mr. Mayor, we are scheduled for our public hearing on September sixth.
Got it.
Tentative adoption date is September nineteenth. So there would be another opportunity for a study session on September twelfth. It's certified by the council.
Very good. Yeah, I see that on our item nine on the items for the September sixth meeting. So, okay, very good. Thank you very much. So including as items scheduled tentatively for the September sixth, twenty twenty two regular council meeting includes a public hearing on the tree preservation code updates as well as many other items. Reports by the city manager are next. Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, counsel. I know you're aware of this, but I just wanted to again reiterate that the city of Lakewood was recognized earlier this, actually last week, last Tuesday by the governor, being a leader as it relates to work on climate change and planning here in Washington State. We were one of eight cities from around the state to receive the two thousand twenty two Governor Smart Communities Award. And this again was for the development of our energy and climate change addition to our comprehensive plan. In addition, the city also received Judge's Merit Award. And this was for the development and now the implementation of our Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan along with the planned action ordinance and everything associated with that. So just wanted to congratulate the mayor and the council for your leadership in that area. And also just wanted to recognize my staff and your planning commission for all the hard work that they have done in in bringing that to, bringing both of those policy objectives to to fruition. As a follow up to some of the, so the public comment last week, you know, the folks in the village departments came in again. As you're know, as you're aware, there's some, been some ongoing conversations between the city and the city helping facilitate some conversations with those folks and others, particularly LASSA. Some of the things that have happened since then is our, our CSRT folks went out there and checked on some of their complaints. The first was as a related to vehicles. They didn't find any code violations or anything associated to vehicles parked along one tenth, which is one side of their of their units. However, they did locate some vehicles along Helcyon that potentially there was some folks living in there. So what they have done is they reached out to the path teams to try and get some assistance to to those folks. They also did a walk through the complex itself on foot. And they didn't locate any issues or concerns by just observing from what they were able to see as they walked through the concern, as they walked through the complex. They also left a voicemail. I know somebody, one of the speakers noted that she was willing to help. So they're in the process of trying to reach out to her, her, her as well. In addition, LASSA continues to have conversations with the three individuals as well as their advocate. And so they've brought in representatives from St. Vincent de Paul, from Sherrod Housing, Goodwill, the library, and it, and just several LASSA staff and volunteers. And so some of the topics that they've discussed with them are, you know, the rights of a landlord to raise rents, the steps that a landlord needs to go through, how to sign up for vouchers at the farmer's market. Also, the possibility of renting a two bedroom unit and taking in a, in a roommate to save on rent. There was some concerns raised by the tenants about plumbing, so we're gonna work with LASSA to see if there's any inspection issues there that we need to address. And then also provided them contact information with Tacoma pro bono. So again, that dialogue between those individuals and LASSA continues. The library advisory committee, they had their second meeting a week ago Friday on August twelfth. And I'm gonna send this information to you. And it's also, I believe it's on their website as well. But they did complete their survey. As of last Friday, they had received one thousand eight hundred and ninety nine survey responses. Don't have all the material collated in terms of what it says. They closed it last Friday. However, they did keep it open over the weekend, apparently. Their next meeting is scheduled for sometime in September. And city representatives representing our senior activity center, particularly our Parks and Rec Director, Marie Dodsworth, and our senior center coordinator, Elizabeth Shidey, have been invited to attend to talk about some partnership opportunities there. Also, the library district has hired some structural engineers to look at what it would take to upgrade the existing library building in terms of costs. In addition, the library is going to be seeking some additional funds to expand their outreach and some of the work that they're currently doing. Right now it's split fifty fifty between the city and the library, but they're not going to be asking the city for any financial resources there. So again, just wanted to keep you up to speed in terms of what the Lakewood Library Advisory Committee is doing. Might have seen that the farmer's market continues to be a great success, so much so that the team and talking with the vendors have decided to add, we're supposed to end the last Tuesday and a week, a week from tomorrow. However, they've extended it into September, not the Tuesday of Labor Day, but the September thirteenth and twentieth. It will close a little earlier, it just gets a little darker. So it will be open from two to s, two to six thirty. Also, just wanted to report that the Public Works Engineering Department, again, after conferring with the Transportation Improvement Board with their personnel, with their staff, have submitted three transportation projects for TIB funding and will know by the end of November is typically when we'll be notified. So submitted for Union Avenue for sidewalks on the south side between Spruce and West Thorn Lane. The other is the whole intersection at Fortieth and One Hundredth, kind of that mess there that needs to be addressed. And then also South Tacoma Way and Ninety Second Street South, the traffic signal there. So those are the ones, the feedback based on all the projects that our team toured the community with at TIB thought would, 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 would do well. In addition, late last week, we learned that the city is on task to receive a one point two seven eight million dollar grant as it relates to the Transportation Safety Program that the state has. And it's for Custer Road and it is between John Dower and about six hundred feet west of Bridgeport. So that, that missing link in there. And so actually a very small match from the city, a hundred and forty two thousand dollars. I know we had submitted several other project, but this is the one that we're receiving funding for. And so if, so we're just waiting on the final notification for that. If it does come to fruition, which we do expect it to, we'll be looking to design in two thousand twenty five and construction in two thousand twenty six or so. And with that, that's actually my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Coffield? No, we'll briefly go through council comments. I will wave to Councilmember Farmer. She indicated she has no comments, but she appreciates being included. So we'll give her a wave and and thank her for her attendance tonight. Councilmember Bell. Mr. Broke. Mr. Brandstetter. Mr. Anderson. I wrote something down here. This question has come up, a request from Tacoma ceasefire for some type of appropriation from the council. Aside from the, the late request, I have more than serious concerns about using City of Lakewood money to buy gift cards for people in Tacoma. No matter how pure the motive and intent of the organization, it just doesn't seem to be an appropriate use of City of Lakewood funds. On a kind of an interesting note, I was appreciative of the fact that our, our tree canopy cover has increased. That is approximately the amount, the area of inside the walk around Wahop Lake. As if that suddenly became tree cover. That would be, that's about fifty acres inside of One Mile Loop. So that gives you, I think, is probably a good, it's probably a good analogy when people ask about which way the tree cover is going. So we have added the, that amount that's the, an amount that's greater than the water area of, of the lake. And on a one-time business development note, the U.S. Golf Association has announced that in five years, in two thousand and seventeen, the Tacoma Country Golf and Golf Club will be the site of the U.S. Women's Senior Open, which this year was won by the well-known Hall of Famer Annika Sorenstam. And they're named by recognizes Julie Angster. They happen to have reached the grand old age of fifty years old, so they play in the, the Senior Open. So that's gonna be a pretty big deal.
Twenty twenty-seven?
Twenty twenty-seven, and we hosted here. So that's all I have.
Great. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Wow. Okay. Short and sweet. Just a few things. I attended a telephonic meeting with a few of the local mayors sponsored by United Way. It's the United Way Mayor's Challenge, and they want to, one, encourage the local communities to adopt or pass a proclamation supporting the good work United Way does in all of our respective communities. So I said I would bring that forward once they get a draft to circulate. And then, of course, they'd love for us to encourage folks to, you know, give to United Way to support our community. So more to follow on that. I, on Friday, went to the two thousand and twenty-two Wash Jam event at Fort Silicon Park. There were about twenty-one hundred attendees. It's a scouting event out there. There were tons of folks camping, so it was actually the time you can actually have legal camping out there at the park. Lots of folks enjoyed their opportunity to enjoy Fort Silicon Park and expressed great thanks and appreciation to our staff for allowing them to do it this year. And hopefully they'll get good feedback that they left the place in a reasonable condition, so more to follow on that. Met with members of the Tacoma Country and Golf Club Board to discuss some opportunities with regard to the Wash Dot project for the interconnector road. More to follow on that, but the board is working with Wash Dot to discuss their respective appraisals back and forth for how their road and configuration should look. The board would love to have some sound attenuation through some concrete walls. So again, that's between Wash Dot and the board, but it was good to get some information on that, at least in where they're headed in terms of their negotiation. On the library front, I had the pleasure of meeting with the city manager and the chair of the Pierce County Library System Board, as well as its executive director, for a meeting this last Friday to discuss all things library. It was a very positive discussion. They were certainly apologetic about the history of the relationship between the City of Lakewood and the Pierce County Library System vis-à-vis activities that have happened or not have, not have happened in the last, you know, several years, leading to the recent announcement of the closure of the Lakewood Library. So they cleared the air a bit, which was very positive. They are committed to making sure that we're in the loop on all things related to the library in the future. And they discussed some plans for the location of a temporary facility, which looks quite nice. Once they get that sort of inked, there'll be more information to follow on where that will be located and how big and what amenities it will have for the public. And more to follow. It was just a good opportunity, probably the first time that the board chairs met with the board chair of this organization, probably in our history. And so they would like to meet actual full board to full board when they get the information back on the survey, when the recommendations are completed from the ad hoc subcommittee, and so that will be a productive meeting. And that is all I have. So at this time, the council will recess into executive session for about thirty minutes pursuant to RCW four-two thirty-one ten one G to review the performance of a public employee. We're not expected to take action following this executive session other than to adjourn the meeting. At this time, we will now be in recess. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you for...
Thank you.
All right.
One, two.
What's the verdict?
Alright, that's the verdict.
Okay.
That's great.